Calling to order, the work session of the Anchorage School Board today is Monday, November 20th, 2017. And I believe all board members are in the building, though not at the dais, except with the exception of Star Marsette, who will be arriving later. We are going to start right off with a presentation via the superintendent from Western Demographics. Dr. Bishop?
Thank you, Madam President, and I want to thank Andy Klup, also from our IT, for the data dashboard training, and thank you for those that are following online and things. We had a training prior to this, so we started a few minutes late. I am going to take the time, of course, our Chief of Operations, Tom Roth, is here, but we also have our consultant that I'd like to present to the board in regard to efficiencies as well as school start times. And I'm going to introduce Shannon Bingham for a minute, so that you can see the vast array of his background and what he brings to the table here at ASD. Shannon has been engaged in school consulting for 34 years as a former school administrator. Mr. Bingham has a keen insight to the political, budgetary, educational, operational management issues associated with the demographic evolution of communities and the impact of change on schools and school districts. Mr. Bingham has been involved with approximately 165 school districts in one capacity or another, ranging in enrollment from 500 to 175,000 students. Gradually, Mr. Bingham has transitioned from being predominantly a master planner and demographer to being an in-demand problem solver and management consultant with a national reputation addressing the most difficult problems that school district administrations face. He brings a broad range of skills to the project. In addition to being an expert demographer, he brings a variety of internal and public facilitation skills to bear in the consideration of complex school management issues. He's pioneered the use of focus groups and community open houses in school districts in lieu of traditional lecture-style meetings. He works to identify the goals of various interest groups in school conflicts and identify solutions with tact and clarity. Many districts have adopted Western Demographics techniques as a new way to address change. With that, I want to just share, he's worked in Alaska, but also Bellevue, Washington, Littleton, Colorado, West Bloomfield, Missouri, Detroit, Michigan, Rockford, Illinois, and Cherry Creek, Colorado, just to name a few. I wanted to share some of these because what we're about to engage, whether it is with efficiencies and school planning for the future, or with a major change in school start times, both of these issues are deeply held tradition in our community and culture and the way that we do business. And so with that, I just want us to enter and know that we're in good hands and that this isn't an only administration issue. It is not only a school issue or a board issue. It is the community of Anchorage and the municipality as a whole, and we look to solve it that way as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Shannon Bingham.
Right. Through the President, to continue Dr. Bishop's introduction, again, I'm also very happy to introduce Mr. Shannon Bingham. Mr. Bingham is in contract with the district to provide research and to conduct and facilitate analyses of two topic areas in which, as the superintendent has described, he has extensive experience in multiple districts across the country. Mr. Bingham divided the analyses that he will do for the district into three project components, and I'd like to very briefly describe those. Some of these portions of the projects will be performed concurrently and over two fiscal years. First, Mr. Bingham will conduct a collaborative capital plant efficiency study and analysis. The outcome of this effort will be a report sometime in the spring of 2018 that, in his words, would explore the district's current schools and their utilization rates in context with future growth planned by the City of Anchorage and long-term ASD program plans. Second, Mr. Bingham will provide research and facilitate administration analysis of modified school start and end times. To provide context, the school board missioned the administration at the beginning of this school year to do a focused study on this topic. As a subset of this project, and based on decisions and guidance from the school board, the third project component involves Mr. Bingham facilitating implementation of school start end time modifications through a very comprehensive stakeholder involvement process. Again, this is based off of decisions and guidance. Before handing over the mic, I do want to acknowledge representation in this room by APA Executive Council leaders, as well as other ASD school principals. The Capital Improvement Advisory Committee is represented. Lieutenant Colonel Jeff Rock, who is a deputy commander of the 673rd Mission Support Group from JABR, also represented our totem president, and we have members of our ASD Student Advisory Council. So again, our intent is that this be a collaborative process with Mr. Bingham. So with that, I'm going to pass over to you.
Great. Thanks, Tom. Well, good evening, good afternoon, good evening, everyone. It's a privilege to be here. I really enjoy working in Anchorage. I've spent a lot of time in Alaska, working and playing, and it's always an interesting weather day. I drove up to Palmer and back today, and wish I had a sail for my vehicle. I probably would have gotten there and back quicker. But as Tom mentioned, I have these three projects that I'm working on for you, and I'll just ask Kathy to advance to the next slide that has these three big questions. Basically, does a change in school start times make sense for ASD? And at a certain point, you may decide that it doesn't, and that'll be great, and I'll move on to working with somebody else. But for the most part, nationally, a lot of districts are asking this question right now, and it's become a fairly large percentage of my consulting practice. I'll talk about that a little bit more in just a moment. The second piece is school efficiency. I've been a catalyst in helping a lot of districts figure out how to become as efficient as possible, how to put the resources in the classroom where they belong instead of in inefficient operational structures, how to try to provide children with new, modern learning environments to the extent possible, how to make sure that we represent all components of our community, ensure that our parents have affordable neighborhoods proximate to high-quality schools as best as we can possibly provide those kind of environments. The third component is really based on taking the process of the start time issue through a community process. And quite a few of the districts that I've worked with and have interviewed that are changing their school start times have done exhaustive stakeholder involvement processes. And I do a lot of that sort of work, and it's something that really is directly related to the success of making that kind of change, is the extent to which you involve everyone. And I've worked with districts that started with having the PhD guys from the university come in and start with the bus drivers first thing, and then move on to teachers and other instructional staff, and then start working with parents. And pretty much, most of these school start time issues wind up in a stakeholder involvement process that has 70, 80, 100 different meetings, from faculty meetings to PTO meetings to meetings with folks who don't have children in school. So they tend to be very, very inclusive before those districts have been able to make decisions. I'll talk about that a little bit more. So really, those three things. The timing of that is the efficiency study would be done by March, so that's more of a short-term, five, six-month process. So I'm very actively engaged in doing that work now. The second piece, which is the school efficiency or the school start time study, is more of a 14 to 18-month kind of a process. So that tends to be a do the initial research, figure out what scenarios make sense, start involving stakeholders, and anticipate an extended process. So that, the research will come first, and then the stakeholder process will come second. So that will be a longer process. There are some big questions that we ask as we consider this school start time issue, and I'll start with that, we'll talk about that a little bit. But basically, it's become thought nationally that high school students shouldn't start school before 8:30. So you may have heard a couple of big exposes on National Public Radio and heard at conferences. A lot of the university researchers are stepping forward and saying that middle and high school students probably aren't learning very much before 8:30. I lead a lot of kind of high adventure trips with schoolteacher friends who tell me they don't think their high school students learn anything before 10:00 in the morning. So that can be kind of a matter of degree, but for the most part, the American Pediatrics Association and the American Medical Association have decided that they would make a ruling that they would declare it's preferable for high school and middle school students to not start until after 8:30. The state of California has also had some preliminary legislation that's currently tabled that would actually make it illegal to start school for secondary kids before 8:30. So this whole idea is really kind of moving forward. So that's a big question that we would ask, is for high school and middle school students, should they start before 8:30, or should we make some big changes to address what these leading researchers are telling us? Now, as I look at nationally, what's happening with this, a big part of what's happening with secondary students and the current kind of tipping point that we're at with student focus has a lot to do with cell phones, social media, and television watching, basically. And it's kind of reached the, kind of that trinity of effects on kids has really reached a bit of a tipping point nationally, so I'll talk a little bit about that as well. Do we believe the elementary students are up first? The research on elementary school sleep and elementary school student wellness is a little bit weaker at the elementary level, but there are a lot of anecdotes, and there is some support from the research community that elementary school kids are waking up at 6:30 or before, and a lot of those kids aren't getting to school until two or three hours later, and they're burning a significant amount of energy before they wind up in the classroom. So that's become another issue that I'm kind of looking for a university partner that might be interested in exploring that from a research standpoint. And basically, what the thought is, is that elementary school kids are burning out because they rise that early, and they don't start school for two hours, so they're getting drowsy by about 2:00. And there's some thought that those students are having the same kind of learning challenges late in their school day that middle and high school kids are having first and second period. Alaskan secondary students, do they have the same circadian rhythm factors as those in the lower 48? So if you've heard of circadian rhythm, it's your, when does your body wake up? Well, a lot of us who walk around with a cup of coffee in our hands, our body wakes up when our bente latte kicks in, but for the most part, kids have a rhythm, and these researchers have tracked when adolescent bodies and when elementary school-age bodies actually wake up, and they can actually graph when kids wake up, when they go to sleep, and when their internal energy levels, as represented by melatonin as a catalyst in that, when those things turn on and turn off. So they've done quite a bit of medical research. Medical doctors have become involved in this whole issue of student sleep and student wellness. And it's described as a student wellness issue because a lot of these children, not only do they have performance issues with grades, standardized college entrance exams, tardiness, alertness in school, they also have some of the wellness issues associated with behaviors, making bad choices with substances, with depression, and with getting behind the wheel of a car at 2:30 in the afternoon, dead, tired, and drowsy, and having traffic accidents. So we've seen a real rash of that, and the RAND Corporation has actually gotten involved in tracking that, and they're monitoring if we were to roll school start times back for high school kids, what sort of savings would there be over time from recapturing the lost cost of these children becoming injured or killed in traffic accidents and all of the other associated costs of kids making bad decisions behind the wheel of a car. But do Alaskan students have those same factors? Because it's dark, it's dark, a big time, big part of the year here. Our elementary school students now are walking to school or riding the bus to school in the dark for a big part of the year, and they start last in our school's start order. So how pertinent is this to Alaska? So I'm beginning to reach out to some other university researchers that might be willing to say, okay, we've had all of this research done in Minnesota and in Colorado, where I'm from, where some of it's been based, and elsewhere in kind of the northern half of the United States, does it apply to Alaska? That's a big question that we need to ask. The other question is, do Alaskan families simulate that lower 48 light situation via household activity, household lighting, indoor climate noise? And what my mother did to me was put on a pot of coffee first thing, and that kind of wakes up everybody in the house. So basically, are those household factors things that are simulating that circadian rhythm effect of daylight coming through windows? So those are some of the big questions. The final question there is, is it appropriate for elementary school students to walk in the dark? And some of the things I'm hearing anecdotally from our administrators and our parents here is that, well, a lot of these children are already walking in the dark, so they're kind of trained. They're a little bit more sophisticated than kids in the lower 48 in that regard. So that's another thing that I'm kind of trying to get as much of a reality check as possible on that question, and I'll probably using more focus groups and talking with parents individually to understand what the perceptions and feelings of their individual children might be regarding, okay, you're talking to me about there being two weeks in the fall and two weeks in the spring, when I'm going to be more prone to walking to school in the dark if you make this change, what are the impacts on how you manage that child's life and that child's safety based on those issues? So those are some of the big questions that we're exploring as a result of the school start time issue. So as far as the national research goes, it kind of breaks into two categories from a performance and wellness standpoint, and those have been done by universities and big hospital networks as far as that research. And then the economic benefits angle has really been kind of pioneered by the RAND Corporation. And actually, I think it was the European Division of RAND that actually assigned their researchers to exploring American opportunity cost or lost opportunity cost of, mostly of high school children driving their own vehicles. So that was one of the more recent pieces of research that you probably heard nationally about six weeks ago it was really publicized then. I'll be setting up a research partition on a hard drive space that you'll have access to if you would like to read synopses of this research or the full text of a lot of this research. That'll all be made available to you and to our school community. So many districts are looking at making changes. Right now, in the United States and Canada, we're about 15% converted to this alternative school start time environment. The traditional start time environment is elementary children go first, middle school, I'm sorry, high school children go first, middle school students are second, and elementary students are last. And that has kind of been the traditional model, where the thought is that we are protecting the youngest children from the morning and facilitating extracurricular activities for high school children to the maximum extent possible. So athletics and extracurriculars for older children, and kind of protection from cold and darkness for elementary school students. And obviously, there's a safety angle associated with that as well. But most of those start times nationally have been that way since the 50s and the 60s. Some of the districts that I've worked with haven't changed their start times for 30 years. They've had the same school start times. Some of the material that I'm looking at for school start times, the publications are 15 or 20 years old. So some of these school start times have been very static over time. And because of the catalyst of children waking up at 4:00 in the morning with a cellphone in bed and web surfing for an hour and a half and going through the instructional day dead tired, that's really been a catalyst that has resulted in sleep deprivation for high school and middle school students becoming a major topic. A lot of these children are winding up at the hospital for one reason or another. They're walking around on five and a half or six hours' sleep. They're spending time watching television late into the evening. They're social networking, usually with a device when they're supposed to be asleep. And a lot of these children are not effectively learning because they're walking around sleep deprived all the time. The national goal that the research is driving is that children get eight hours' sleep. So most of the metrics that you're going to see revolve around the idea of how do we get kids to get at least eight hours' sleep? Now, think about that on your own terms. I don't get eight hours' sleep every night, but boy, when I do, I'm a whole lot better than I am when I'm walking around on five and a half, or four, or six. So think about that as far as your own effectiveness, when you've had a good night's sleep or you haven't, and then transfer that to a 16-year-old, having that same kind of handicap, going through the academic day on five and a half or six hours' sleep, because they had to wind up in a conversation with somebody via a smartphone regarding some issue, okay? And it's imperative. It may not be important to you, but it's important to them. So they have that complication, but on top of that, the instructional day is structured so that we're requiring them to be at school really early on top of that. So before 8:00, before 7:30, the district that I just worked with to do a conversion in Littleton, Colorado, our start time is 7:20. So those kids are guaranteed to not get eight hours' sleep, and they're guaranteed to not get seven hours' sleep because their circadian rhythm results, and the average high schooler going to bed at about 10:15. So you can kind of do the math there, working backwards. It takes, the average child, from the time they wake to the time they wind up in school, I think, is about 55 minutes for secondary age kids. So the math just doesn't work for them to get enough school to function properly. So nationally, there's been this new paradigm, where, okay, we're in this situation, we know we want to protect elementary children from cold and darkness, but the high school kids are really walking around like a bunch of zombies. Can we do something about that? So the research really kind of addresses that. As far as how does that apply to our daylight situation, our climatic situation, how cold it is in the morning, the ability of Anchorage children to walk around with, to a certain extent, quite a bit of artificial light floating around? And I've spent enough time here to experience this cloud cap that we have that absorbs a lot of light. So there's a big part of the morning that's pretty bright in some of the brighter parts of town, but in other parts of town, it's pretty dark. So are kids prepared enough because of our fluctuating climate and daylight situation up here to address that? So those are some of the big questions and some of the big issues associated with optimized start time. Nationally, as I said, about 10%, 12%, 13% of districts are currently acting on this or have acted on it. Some of the districts I've worked with, it took them about six years to get this done. In Littleton, we had our board meeting Thursday night, last Thursday night, and decided to make a change. We've still got two scenarios we're deciding from, but we're about 15 months in in Littleton. And the other district that I have worked with on other projects, Cherry Creek, was one of the districts that took about six years to get it done. Seattle took about six years to get it done. Bellingham, Washington, took about two years to get it done. There are a variety of issues. I'm interviewing all the districts around the country that have been working on this in the last two years to kind of find out what some of their perspectives are. But as you look at this map, you can see Minnesota, North Dakota, Iowa, Illinois, that kind of Midwestern block, they kind of were on the bleeding edge of making the change happen. And then you're seeing Oregon and Florida following up, where 25 to 49% of those districts had moved to a later start time. So it kind of started there, in the Midwest, and specifically in Minnesota. So of all the states in the United States, when I try to think about who's most similar to Alaska as far as cold and darkness, well, Minnesota, North Dakota, that's kind of the part of the lower 48 that climatologically has a little bit in common with us. So I kind of, I kind of thought, yeah, I don't know if there's a great connection there, but it's really saying to me, yeah, that in some of these cold, dark places in the wintertime, that they did go ahead and make the change. Now, there is a leading researcher at the University of Minnesota named Dr. Kyla Walstrom that's been engaged in this for about 20 years, and she's really been one of the major catalysts for making that happen. So I'll start with talking a little bit about some of these research studies. The two leading national researchers on this are both doctors. Dr. Kyla Walstrom at the University of Minnesota has been involved more in the student performance, student, you know, academic aspects of this, and she sponsored one of the best-known recent studies that was focused on Minnesota and Colorado and a few Wyoming high schools, and that's leading research. And then Dr. Lisa Meltzer with the National Jewish Health Hospital Network is the second leading researcher. And there's another major sleep and wellness researcher up in Minnesota that was also involved in a lot of this work. I'll pass some of his research on to you through one of the web partitions we'll set up. But these two folks were really the start of this. Dr. Walstrom directs the Center for Applied Research and Educational Improvement at the University of Minnesota. This is her lead document, basically. She is talking about some of the school districts in Adina, Minnesota, Minneapolis School District, and they did pre- and post-research on schools that were starting at 7:20 and moved to 8:30 and 8:40 respectively. And then there's a group or a cluster of schools that range in start times from about 8:00 until about 9:00, and the hours' sleep that these children wound up getting was just directly proportional to that later start time. So as the start time moved later, the research proved with all the noise in the system, cheating, okay, we just went to bed later, we binged, slept on the weekends, which a lot of teens are doing, they'll binge sleep on Saturday and Sunday to kind of make up for what they do during the week. But for the most part, there's been a direct correlation between later start time and kids having a higher propensity to get eight hours' sleep. So they're also showing that there are improvements in attendance rates for ninth, 10th, and 11th grade students in the Minneapolis area, high schools that were involved in the sample. There was a high count of students involved, the N was rather high. So from a research standpoint, it's a pretty high confidence level as far as how good the numbers were. Graduation rates improved over the three years after the later start time was initiated in Minneapolis. Positive trend line was found for pre- and post-comparison on actual GPAs of Minnesota high school students as well. The next slide talks- The next slide talks about grades and what happened to them as they went from 7:30 to 8:30, and that, those lines are generally up, basically. Kids are doing better. First and second period class performance is one of the most incontrovertible sets of research I've looked at in a while. Students in Adana reported statistically significant less depression. School counselors and nurses reported fewer students seeking help for emotional issues. 92% of parents in Adana said their teenagers were easier to live with. Have a look at this table. Excuse me. You can see that as these start times went later, that second column there shows the percentage of those students that got eight hours' sleep. So at Fairview High School in Boulder, the big town close to where I live, I live in a little town about the size of Sutton, but those kids were getting about, a third of them were getting eight hours' sleep. And then as they went up toward the higher, later start times, as many as two-thirds of those kids were actually getting eight hours' sleep. So by the time they got their little Jackson Hole sample, two-thirds of those kids that were starting just before nine o'clock were getting eight hours' sleep. Now, again, this is not a partial 100% victory kind of a situation. Every child is going to be different, which certain kids are going to be able to make a contract with their parents, with their teachers, that they're not going to take a device to bed with them. It's going to vary. But the averages are indicating that this later start time created a situation where more students at least had the chance to get that eight hours' sleep, and the aggregate improvements are well documented. Here are some of the behavioral issues associated with that. Kids that got less sleep were more likely to light up a cigarette. Kids that didn't get eight hours' sleep were more likely to use alcohol, more likely to use marijuana. That's really relevant in Colorado as well, where there's a lot of it floating around. Currently sexually active, more kids were prone to make poor decisions in that category. Feeling sad or hopeless within the last two weeks and depression indicators in general, there was a 10% swing in kids that were getting eight hours' sleep versus those that were not. It's a pretty big N. This is pretty decent research, 8,600 students in the sample. You can see some of the issues there. Some of these kids, that really talks about binge sleeping on weekends. Kids are sleeping nine and a half hours on the weekends, so they were kind of measuring some of the other student behavior issues that are typical of adolescent kids. I guess you don't really pay attention to how much kids are sleeping on the weekend because they don't have to be anywhere. But for the most part, this binge sleeping on the weekend thing is a national phenomenon as well. There's that 54 minutes average amount of time from wake up to leaving the house for most kids. Kids are pretty efficient. They, high school kids don't hang around a lot in the morning, but these elementary kids, they've got two and a half hours to kill. Let's go crazy! So basically, that's what we're seeing at the elementary level, is all of these elementary kids that have two or three hours to burn in the morning, they're burning energy, and by the time they get to the school, they've got about five and a half good hours before they start cycling down like Miss Pac-Man. So we're seeing anecdotes from teachers that they really think that if they got those kids earlier, those children would have more energy and they'd be more effective as elementary school children if they weren't showing up already one-third expended as far as their energy for the day. This talks more about depression. Falling asleep in class went down. Kids stopped hitting Coke and coffee, stopped having a phone or a computer in bed as much, doing dangerous things without thinking about them. The next page talks about first and/or third period GPAs and cores that they were doing significantly better. And let's see, the next slide in Walstrom's research talks about mass scores on state and achievement tests improving, ACT tests improving. And as I talk to superintendents of districts that have done these conversions, even before they're having the universities come in and do the post-testing, they're seeing improvements just anecdotally in scores as they look around at what they've got after they've made the change. One school administrator that had been working on this for about six years said this was probably the most constructive change in their education system that he'd seen in his entire career. There were kids walking up to him that he had lifelong involvement with that were just in tears over how big of a change is made for those children. Tardiness down for all high school grade levels. Attendance rates improved for 11th and 12th. That's just cutting school entirely is what the research community calls the attendance rate. Next slide talks about kids with jobs and clubs were probably more likely to get taxed and not get as much significant sleep. I worked all through high school, I didn't sleep very much, and they're finding that that's pretty consistent even today with kids. The other thing is a lot of the kids I've encountered in open house meetings are in five or six different activities. They may be in two sports and three or four clubs, and a lot of those kids that are scattered are going to be part of that kind of permanently sleep-deprived set of kids that have so much going on that they're probably not going to sleep very much. Those behaviors carry right into adulthood, so I'm one of those people, so. Students who participate, music, less likely to make bad choices, more likely to drink coffee and tea. Some of these kind of adolescent substance use research things were kind of interesting, all the things that they learned as a result of this. The next slide introduces Lisa Meltzer's research. Lisa has two middle school kids, she's a medical doctor, she works for National Jewish, she does research all over the United States on wellness and sleep issues. Her research really talks about behavior problems, noncompliance, aggression, hyperactivity, poor impulse control, risk-taking behaviors, and accidents. Neurocognitive issues with attention, memory, executive function, all of those things are impacted when kids are sleep deprived. Weight gain, they're beginning to also identify that kids that are going around eating snacks to stay awake and drinking coffee and soda pop to stay awake, those kids have a higher tendency to be obese. Here are some of the benefits from kids that get more of eight hours' sleep. I'm not going to repeat myself. Dr. Meltzer is finding the same thing. As far as impacts go, well, the more I wade into this, we're finding a couple of things consistently, especially as I do anecdotal telephone interviews. As far as impacts, shaving an hour off the end of the day has an impact on sports that need daylight in late October and November. For us, we've already kind of moved past that change where it's going to be dark, it was dark at four o'clock, basically, today. This morning, I don't think it really, we really had usable light until about 8:15, 8:10. So closer we get to the equinox, that gets worse. So we've already got a short day. But in the spring, when a lot of those programs play in the lower 48, those 10 programs listed there were the programs that were most likely to have some sort of a challenge with kids having less time right at the end of the day. What we found is that nationally, coaches, we actually wound up seeing, we had more available coaches as a result of that because folks that had full-time jobs, especially in the private sector, could actually come in and coach. Practice didn't start at four o'clock, they could actually get off work at four o'clock, and they could go coach a cross-country team as a volunteer. They could go coach, be an assistant coach for a football team as a volunteer. So Seattle observed that, Buffalo, Minnesota observed that, Cherry Creek, Colorado observed that, that they actually had a deeper pool of volunteer coaches because the academic day slid a little bit later. Kind of the worst-case scenario, though, in this is the middle school girl who was in the robotics club. She goes to robotics three times a week, she's at a STEM school maybe, and her day was over at 4:45 and she had to walk home in the dark. That's one of the anecdotes that was kind of the most profound thing that folks observed for me. Under your scenario, my seventh grader would have to walk home in the dark after robotics. Now, again, that's in a different part of the world, where here, you know, anybody who hangs around at school for 30 or 45 minutes is going to walk home in the dark right now. So some of the folks that I've spoken with at the senior leadership level in this district so far have said, well, a lot of our students are already conditioned to that situation. Four months out of the year, they're going to do that anyway. Doesn't matter how old you are, or what event you're in, or what grade level school you're attending, a lot of these kids are already trained to address that. And then a lot of our in-house folks are already saying, well, let's see. I work at CH2M Hill, I get up in the morning, I turn on all the lights, there's a pot of coffee going, we're blaring the radio, everybody gets up. That, that's circadian rhythm in our house, basically, is that's the equivalent of the sun coming up, you know, full and bright, so everybody in the house gets up. So some of the preliminaries have suggested that there is this pseudo-circadian rhythm in Alaska that's based on household activity. Very quickly, within the next three weeks, I'll be doing some internal focus groups with district staff in this building who have kids in school to kind of do some reality testing of the Alaskan condition to kind of be the front end for my research design as I move forward into this examination. Elementary school kids, this is some of the circadian rhythm stuff that's kind of interesting. This next slide shows wake time, bedtime, total sleep time as kids move through third, fourth, and fifth grade. The next slide talks about melatonin onset. Basically, as kids age, there are these internal changes that, almost like clockwork, affect how much sleep they need. As they get older, they need less sleep. The next slide shows, on the right there, wake times across school level. You can see third, fourth, and fifth grade kids are getting up a little bit later when school times change. How much, you know, what is bedtime? Third grade bedtime is 2,100 hours, which is nine o'clock. And you can see that bedtime advancing all the way to about 10:50 as those children age up into 11th grade. So all of these kind of factors are pretty doggone linear. It's remarkable. I wasn't expecting the research to be that clean, and it actually is. So what would we do with this? Well, I kind of crafted these six little preliminary scenarios that have a lot to do with how we do business now, and did some internal testing with two groups of administrators during two sets of meetings. And the six scenarios adapt our current start times a bit. Currently, we start at 7:30 for high school, at 8:15 for middle school, and at nine o'clock for elementary. We have a three-tiered bus system, and we have to have 45 minutes between those three tiers because of how slow traffic moves in Anchorage, especially during the wintertime. So in order to avoid late buses, buses having issues with snow, busing having issues with pack ice on the roads, we have to have that 45 minutes. Basically, everyone kind of preferred scenario one and six, although the others are still on the table. And you can see scenario one just flips elementary and high school. So under scenario one, we'd put elementary in that first position at 7:30, and just an hour after they wake up, they'd be sitting in school, and they'd be burning that energy in class instead of burning that energy driving mom crazy first thing in the morning, okay? So that's the idea there, is are our Alaskan children party and prepared enough to maybe go to school early instead of going to school later? Then we would put those high school kids into that 9:00 AM position. So that's scenario one. That's the one that a lot of folks kind of like. It's not a big change, it's just flipped two levels, basically. You can, I just described it in one sentence. You're on the phone with one of your patrons, what's the proposal? Flip high school and elementary. Boom, there it is. Easiest phone call you've ever had, that's what's being discussed. Scenario six does the same thing, but rolls it back 15 minutes, and the thinking there is we get a little bit closer to when people who have corporate and pretty much the kind of leading six or seven employment sectors in Anchorage, that's real close to when they need to be at work, so it kind of makes sense as far as a child, what I call the child delivery time, where you actually are taking your child to work and then going to work yourself. It kind of made some sense to look at something a little bit later and gave those kids a little bit later start time. The others are various combinations of flipping and rolling forward or back. And I'll let you look at those at your own convenience. As far as how viable are those, preliminary examination of all those six has identified that they're viable. Will I come up with other scenarios? Yes. The more I listen, the more I learn about how we do business here, I'll probably try to come up with a couple more that would be more appropriate for us. The next slide kind of shows central staff response. For the most part, the research is compelling. Everybody I show it to seems to agree with it. You get Kyla Walstrom in here or Lisa Meltzer up here to talk about this, and they're really compelling, the people that actually have done the research and have anecdotes, never-ending anecdotes about individual experiences of kids that were in psychotherapy because they were sleep deprived. Some of the stories that you hear will curl your hair. I mean, it's just amazing, some of the problems kids have and some of the relief that they get when they go from being sleep deprived to getting seven and a half or eight hours' sleep a night. As far as other things, most everybody in this building thought that the earlier and the more frequently we share the research with staff and parents, the better off we'll be. So that's why we kind of programmed this big open house process in conjunction with discussing the change, we would be as inclusive as we possibly could. Communication, the value of that. Folks who have elementary school buildings were a little bit less concerned about kids going, elementary kids going earlier than I thought they'd be, and that was a surprising thing to me. And I just think kids are a little bit more used to some of the local conditions and general darkness than I'm accustomed to. Transportation has kind of issued a preliminary statement that if we stick with three tiers and you're just flipping or rolling forward or back, we're not really looking at a cost impact. Some of the districts I've worked with have add-to-add buses. We're adding six buses in Littleton. Seattle actually bonded to light their fields, so they actually, in conjunction with the start time change, floated a bond election that passed, and they're going to light all of their fields to say, oh, it's a non-issue now, we just lit the fields. Lead concerns, childcare for elementary kids and its cost, because most of the childcares, you abolish having childcare in the morning and go to like a three-hour or two-and-a-half-hour childcare strand in the afternoon, and that was a cost. In Minnesota, the government's actually paying for that. Kids get, families get a preschool or a childcare stipend, and they just restructured how they spent their stipend. Extracurricular activities are also the other concern. Big questions. This is talking about school efficiency, which is the next piece. Dr. Bishop, do I need to pause and respond to a few questions about the start time issue?
I, Madam President, that probably would be a good thing to do now, and then we'll finish up. We will be finished by 5:30, and that clock, I think, is a little fast. It's only 4:56, so it's about five minutes fast. But maybe take five minutes and then questions, and then we'll go on to the second part. It's pretty thorough, so not sure if there are any questions, and it's just the beginning of.
Mr. Holloman?
One on the data.
One on the data, I, I think most of the data you were presenting from schools was comparing data from before, when they had an early start time, to when they went to a late start time.
Yes.
The health and wellness, that's, those weren't longitudinal, that was, those were traits associated with students that were getting eight hours. It wasn't students that had changed from less than eight hours to eight hours in your following behavior. Because at first, I started to text my son and tell him to go to bed.
And yes, to that second question as well, that most of the research revolves around, what are the behaviors when kids get more sleep? And then the before and after aspect associated with start times was, before the change, our average child, one-third of the student body was getting eight hours sleep, and after the change, two-thirds of the student body were getting eight hours sleep. So that was kind of how they made the logical link. But some of the rubrics were just before and after. So some of the depression research was before and after incident reporting, and some of the accident research is before and after incident reporting. So it, it was kind of a combination, about half and half of it was incidents, incident counts before and after the change, and then other parts of the research were steady-state behavior of kids that got seven hours, six-and-a-half hour sleep a night, and kids that got eight hour sleep at night, and what those, those indicators were.
Any other board members? Mr. Donlin?
He mentioned that the goal was eight hours sleep. What's, what are the, what does the AMA or the medical experts say about the ideal amount of sleep?
I don't know that right off the top of my head, but I'd be delighted to get back with you on that, but I think ideal is, is eight or eight-and-a-half hour sleep. There was a bar graph that I showed that showed what the, what the necessary amount was, and I can't remember, I don't think there are values at the top of those column headers, but I can get back with you with the answer to that. But the desired goal is for high school kids to get eight hour sleep and middle school kids to get eight hour sleep. And a lot of the researchers are saying, they think the middle school sleep deprivation issue has gotten just as bad at the high school level. I mean, I've got seven, seventh grade students walking up to me in Bellevue and showing me their prototype iPhone eight that their parent gave them, saying, "Yeah, I was up with this at five this morning, and I've figured out all the things that the prototype can do." So these are kids that their dad works for Microsoft and they have a prototype phone, you know? And so I think the middle school kids are getting just as sucked in to the, the, the problem of sleep deprivation as high school kids. But I'd be delighted to get back with you with that number.
Second question?
Yeah.
Yes.
Did any of the school districts that the statistics are from here, do any of them utilize a K-through-eight format instead of middle school?
In that research sample, I would say no. I activate K-eights all over, well, all over Colorado. I'm, I'm kind of the K-eight activation guy, so I know a lot about K-eights. The K-eight research in general is really weak. Whenever researchers design these projects, they don't do the K-eight component of it, and so I struggle. I have districts all the time ask me, "Hey, show us some performance numbers on K-eight." And it's been something that, because a lot of, there's a lot of ambiguity in the research, that a lot of universities have avoided approaching it because it's, it's dirty statistically, and they have a hard time, they weigh, they've spent a lot of money on certain things that were based upon an initial hypothesis associated with K-through-eight, and they get into it and their, their outcomes are inconclusive. So, so it tends to be troublesome. So I guess the answer to your question is, I haven't seen anything that was K-eight driven.
Mr. Holloman?
Any schools you're familiar with that do like a staggered system within the levels? Like, high school doesn't start at a precise time, but say starts over a period of hours?
Yeah, the whole building-based decision-making model has really resulted in some schools saying, "Okay, you've given me that parameter, but we're not going to start then and run our academic day then." I work with one district that has twenty-three different school start times. So they have figured out a way to make that work, given their transportation environment, they're a more urban district that has a lower ridership percentage, and, but for the most part, most of the elementary schools are either one or two different start times, and most of them try to stay together. But there have been some things stepping outside of the realm. Some of the faculties wanted to have their faculty meeting first thing in the morning so they could get out the door by four o'clock. But for the most part, most of the districts have said, "If we're going to ask our patrons to do this start time thing, we're not going to violate the research by having a bunch of activities or a bunch of kind of heterogeneous programs that are in the morning because we can do it then." And the exceptions have been mostly in Minnesota and Colorado for ice time and pool time. So hockey, figure skating, and swimming have been the one area where a lot of the districts had bent the rules. And to be quite honest with you, most of those athletes manage their time in an amazing way anyway, and they know in order to perform academically, they're going to have to sleep. So a lot of those kids are on custom diets and they have custom sleep patterns. And I've had tenth-grade kids show me their schedule on their device, and it was three times more complex than my schedule, and that impressed me, that, you know, a lot of these kids are highly, highly organized, especially if they're in athletics or music programs, they, they tend to be very organized. But yeah, there are some heterogeneous start times, but most of the research is, you're looking at one thing because you get too many dynamics in a complex issue, and people's heads explode, basically. So they're mostly just focusing on one start time.
Ms. Plunkett?
So, so I know we have a couple of schools that start at different times. As you do your research, you're going to include that in your process?
Yes, ma'am. There are charters, there are specialized curriculum schools, there are special education schools, there are gifted schools. I do a lot of these kind of program relocation, special program housing projects, where I come up with a building to put a gifted program, or a building to put a low-incident special ed program. And usually, I try to pull all those in and say, "This is everybody in our quiver of services, and this change might just affect gen ed. Do these other programs want to be part of the program? Does that fit within our special service delivery model for transportation within the goals of that charter board's parameters?" So I tend to be very inclusive to make sure it's a, it's a big tent that everybody can get underneath.
Okay. We'll have another opportunity to do more questions, if you'd like to continue.
Great, thank you. So basically, school efficiency, in general, school efficiency, for the most part, addresses lower utilization schools, and to what extent is it appropriate for a district to look at boundary changes to balance enrollment? Let's say you have one school at seventy percent utilization adjacent to a school at a hundred and thirty percent utilization. Can you level the playing field and make that school work better by doing a boundary change? The other issue is you have a cluster of four seventy percent utilization schools. It's costing the district a significant amount of money from an operating budget standpoint to run four schools. Can you consolidate into three? So there's boundaries, there's consolidation, and then there's the whole school condition issue. Nationally, especially on the West Coast, school districts have gotten into the business of what I call scrape-offs, which is basically completely replacing a school that's fifty or sixty years old. So you can look at, let's, let's go back one slide, Kathy. Oh, go forward one, one slide. Go back one slide. Current capital renewal strategy. The scrape-offs and renewals is an issue for us. Everybody in, in the United States is currently doing that. We have a lot of buildings, school buildings that are sixty, seventy, eighty years old, wood-framed buildings in the, in the Pacific Northwest. A lot of these buildings are rotten. This is a damp climate, schools just rot. So for example, in Bellevue, Washington, where I also work, we've had three large bond elections, and over the course of the past twelve to fourteen years, we've replaced ninety percent of our capital plant. We just scraped off the old buildings and built new buildings. We were piecemeal renovating buildings, and people were saying, "You're just throwing good money after bad." And in the kind of high-performance education environment, people are saying, "Well, let's see, you've got yourself the laptop computer there, you, you added RAM, you updated your processor, you put a new hard drive in it, you've still got a ten-year-old computer." Okay? So basically, the computer I had prior to my new computer here, which is only five years old, was eight years old, and I had done just about every hot rod warranty voiding change to it you could think of. But the, the metaphor there is that we're doing that with school buildings. Some of what we've spent on some of these school buildings is a hundred and forty or a hundred and fifty percent of the cost to actually build a new school. So especially in damp climates, school districts are starting to do scrape-offs, and they're able to justify those more. But they're not districts that are in the environment that we're in, where we have kind of an informal constraint that we don't bond for more than our debt retirement allotment for that year. So every year, we have fifty, fifty-five, sixty million dollars available to do a one-year construction program, and the districts that are able to do these facility replacements are having a lot bigger bucket of money to work with. So for example, when Matsu did their big bond election and did a bunch of renovation, we did some new schools, that was a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-year, a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-million-dollar bond election with a five-year scope. So we told the taxpayers, "You're not going to see us darkening your door for another five years." So that's what these other lower forty-eight school districts are doing. They're saying, "Okay, we've got a pretty big package, but you're not going to see us for another five years." So they're able to, via economies of scale, to staff up, put four or five scrape-off and replacement projects on a docket and get a bunch of stuff done. So when they do that, they can say, "Okay, here's a cluster of three or four buildings. We've got two of those four that are sixty-year-old buildings that are in poor condition. We're going to scrape off two of those buildings, build one slightly bigger school, and just continue on with three programs, three operating budgets instead of four." So by doing that, they're able to become more efficient, and they're able to give a newer, more modern facility to their parents and their, and their children in exchange for becoming more efficient operationally. So that's kind of become, one of the big strategies is, as we go along and we do this scrape-off and replace idea, can we become more efficient? In Anchorage, we probably have nine places where via boundary changes or some sort of a consolidation, we could become significantly more efficient and maybe save four or five operating budgets. So I'm actively researching nine areas that affect twenty-three different schools where we could make those kind of improvements, where in addition to giving families and children a more modern education environment, we become more efficient. Now, I know that we still get small school bonuses from the state of Alaska by operating smaller schools, so to a certain extent, those savings are defrayed by higher revenue coming from the state, but we're also beginning to wonder how long that is going to continue. How long can we count on small school bonus money coming to us from the state of Alaska? And also, we need to demonstrate that we're being as efficient as we possibly can, and if we're running nine or ten schools at sixty-five or seventy percent, how do we defend that to the business community and others? So that's part of what I've been hired to do, is to explore those examples. And in the coming months, between now and March, I'll be showing this community various areas where we could do a consolidation, we could do a boundary change, we could do scrape-off and replace where children wind up with something better. So in conjunction with that, we would explore the change of having these one-year horizon bond packages to maybe having a two-year horizon or a three-year horizon, and how does that benefit what we could actually do? So just to talk a little bit about that, let me show you some examples. As we look at this, Kathy, go on to the next slide. Here I'm talking about some of these strategies for various ways to save money, multiple programs in a single facility, looking at charters in special schools and saying, "Can we coexist in one building?" So some of these ideas have been tried in other school districts in order to say, "Okay, we're offering a structure within which we house education programs. We have a five-hundred-student building, we have a pair of two-hundred-student buildings. Can we operate two, two-hundred-student programs in one building?" So that's one of the hypotheses I'll explore. I will tell you that in Denver, in Denver Public Schools, they explored that very aggressively and had some problems with it, quite frankly. So I'm being very candid about, well, a lot of times you can't put two programs in one building. So that's one of the things we'll explore, is how viable is that? Let's go on to the next slide, Kathy. There are probably five different types of, of facility improvement, and our smaller, more incremental strategy has really addressed more on deferred maintenance, major building systems that you see listed there. We go around and we're able to, in a broad-based way, to improve all of our buildings a little bit. But our structure doesn't really allow us to make, to, to buy a new car, you know, basically. We keep fixing up the old car. Both of my vehicles, let's see, I've done a transmission, I've done a brake job, I've got a busted windshield, you know, at a certain point, Shannon, buy a new van, you know? So, so basically, you know, that's the issue. To what extent, on some of these buildings that are fifty or sixty years old, that are extremely hard to maintain, would a, would a full school replacement make more sense? But there are various stopgaps, like facade improvements in conjunction with a secure perimeter, security enhancement process. I'll show you an example of that. Major modernization without scrape-off usually costs about fifty percent of what a building is worth, and then full-scale replacement. So Kathy, cycle into this. These are just some slides of, of a district that we're packaging a bond election right now. All the sidewalks look like that. They're all patched, basically. The next slide, here's a facade that is driving our customers away, basically. One of the main concerns that we get for this school is, "It's horrible. I'm not putting my child in that school." Okay? So, you know, district to district, a lot of people say, "Well, our, our clientele doesn't really respond to that kind of criticism." But to a large extent, I think it is relevant. And in some places, we can see the percentage of our kid population that's served by public schools is lower than what we think it might be. Why is that? Well, they have a better option next door. So, so some of these issues become relevant. Next slide, structural. This school is a scrape-off candidate. This is Newton Middle School in Littleton, Colorado. This is a district that hasn't really ever had a bond election over a hundred million dollars, and if they replace this school, it'll cost them eighty. So basically, they got to figure out, how do we have a bond where we can put a scrape-off in our bond package? So they're dealing with this challenge right now. That's why I'm showing you this example. Asphalt, the bus replacement, these are the things that can be dealt with incrementally. This was a four-million-dollar secure perimeter security project, and while we were at it, we put a new front facade on this school. So this school leaked. There were basically external doors where an active shooter could get in any door on the perimeter of the facility. They went around, they secured all their doors, they created a single supervised front entrance. Go to the next slide, Kathy. With this security situation, go to the very next slide. You can see, this is the only way to get into the school, is pass the gatekeepers at the front. And in conjunction with this secure perimeter process, they put a new front facade on the school, and this has become one of the more sought-after schools in the district because they spent a little bit of money on the curb appeal of the school. Next slide, this was a school that was having some structural problems, and they decided to spend about forty percent of the replacement cost of this school and do some major systems modernization. In the library, this is the new library, and let's look at the next slide. You can see, that looks just like a brand-new school. So certain parts of schools, you can make them look just like a brand-new school, and that works within the incremental model. Bellevue, they're replacing the whole enchilada. So what we're looking at here is three secondary schools that range in value from eighty-five to a hundred and sixty-five million dollars. to one hundred and sixty-five million dollars. So their bond packages are big. They've had three three-hundred-million-dollar bond packages in the last fourteen years, and they replaced every school in the district. So, different environment. It's the south half of the Microsoft campus. So, you know, we have to be realistic about what we're looking at from a financial capacity situation, but to a lesser degree, including some of those other levels of expenditure and levels of facility modernization and replacement, districts are able to scale around what they're doing, and in conjunction with that, look at consolidation and look at how do we become more efficient and effective, do what we want to do with a bigger student body, a bigger faculty, which really helps us from an instructional program standpoint in some areas, and how do we make that in conjunction with some facility improvement? So combine those two things. Try to make bigger programs and try to make better facilities, but maybe fewer of them in a few specific pockets. Here are some of the criteria that I'll be looking in our schools, taking some of our existing conditions inventory data, taking some of these rubrics, working very closely with Tom's staff to identify buildings where we think we can do some things, and then run some feasibility on what we think our best ideas might be. Then, let's see, I've already talked about that. Let's go forward to, here's Bellevue's schedule. You can kind of see what they did going back to about two thousand and four, two thousand and two, that's their whole schedule on what they got done with three bonds over a twelve-year period. Next slide, costing, this is what I did a ride in Denine, a cost four years ago up in the Matzoo. So that's about the same size as our elementary schools. Those costs have gone up by five or seven or eight percent per annum since then, I suspect, so that would mean an elementary school replacement would cost us twenty-eight, twenty-nine million dollars. So if we're looking at a fifty-million-dollar-per-year budget for a total bond package, that says, "Well, we could probably just do one replacement in that one year, if that." So that kind of says, eh, the scale of this is kind of creating some challenges for us to have a more comprehensive replacement strategy. I won't talk about these, but basically, as I look at these, and you can look at these on your own, you're going to see clusters of three or four buildings in probably six or eight places around the district where we've got low utilizations in the sixties, and those are areas where, can we balance schools so that they can do a better job by having, instead of having an underutilized school next to a profoundly overutilized school next door? Can we balance some of those populations? And then some of these places where we have a cluster of four significantly underutilized schools, are there environments where we could go to three schools in that area and then spend some capital money on those facilities to make those better, more modern education environments, but have fewer operating budgets and be doing business in a more effective way by doing that? That's what I've been asked to do, is kind of look at that and see how viable that is. A lot of cases, these things aren't going to be viable. There are going to be schools in healthy neighborhoods with affordable housing, dense student populations, building in horrible condition, where I'm going to say, "I wouldn't change that. What I'd do is I'd replace that building," or I'd significantly renovate that building. I look at these things from a very balanced community value standpoint. So anyway, that's the challenge that I've been asked to undertake. I'm inclusive, I hope I'm tactful, and I tend to think about these things from the standpoint of what's best for programs, what's best for children, what's best for families, and what's good for our pocketbook. So I'm going to try to show you some ideas where you might see some opportunities that you want to act on. So with that, I'll stop and respond to any questions, and thank you for your attention and for the opportunity to help you address some of these challenges, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Open it up for some board questions. Ms. Marsette?
So one of my biggest concerns, I think, with, and I'm going to go back to start times, is we have several after-school programs, and like you said, the cost of those, and, you know, students that have to go home and wait for their siblings to come home after school. How much was that a factor in your studies?
It's been a pretty big factor. One of the major criticisms is, my high school student is my childcare provider, and so to a certain extent, we have to be realistic about what that situation is. And there are some little movements you can make with start times that have different effects, but, you know, that's going to be ten percent of the student body, or fifteen percent of the student body. In some cases, it's more. But some of the anecdotes I've heard, especially from Cherry Creek School District, was, "We were shocked and amazed. My elementary kid came home from school and went outside and played." That was kind of an interesting thing to hear, because previously, they were starting later and they were getting home so late in the day that there wasn't that outdoor time, playtime. So there were some improvements. Now, obviously, those are situations where those children were returning to an environment that was semi-supervised, where they could go out and do things. But for the most part, that, some of those latchkey issues become very relevant, and I'll be looking at those things as far as what our average cost is, what our average ability for a parent to pay for after-school childcare is, and what does our provider network look like?
And I guess I worry about that, because we do have a large, low economic population, so, yeah, it'd be interesting.
Mr. Holman?
Over the past number of years, we have had a lot of discussion locally about consolidation of schools. And over the past couple of weeks, as I've thought about it more and more, my concern is, if we do that, we, say if we consolidate one high school into two others, or reduce a program, we obviously lose sports teams, we lose a student government, we lose a lot of opportunities. And as you're perhaps making recommendations, I'd like for those costs to be noted in there. As we consolidate groups of students, we limit the number of leadership positions or activity positions that kids can excel in or rise to the top in. I think sometimes we lose sight of that, and I'd like for that to be part of anything that we note.
Thank you, Ms. Plunkett.
So not something to answer now, but as a part of the research, it would be nice to have, in addition to the program, the percentage for the program capacity, to have the actual number of students for each of those items as well, because to a certain extent, the two correlate. You really need both.
Madam President, I just want to add that this is going to be a pretty long process, and utilizing any area that we would look at, we would speak to the people in that area and the stakeholders in that area to bring back any recommendations. There might be, one of the things that Shannon had just told me about is the key to what you brought up of lower socioeconomic, that we do see that small schools are actually beneficial for certain student groups. So it isn't just an efficiency, just to save money. It truly is to bring about better outcomes as well as we move forward. So there's a lot of balancing, and it's very complex, and that's why we want to have somewhat an expert brought in who has done these, seen the pitfalls, seen what's happened in large areas, small areas, consolidations, openings, changing boundaries, the like, so that we can learn from major change elsewhere. So I just look forward to the work.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Thank you, Mr. Roth, and thank you to all the folks who came, who are part of this study. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll move in our agenda now to focus on students, staff, and community. Dr. Bishop, would you please start us?
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to this evening's Focus on Staff and Students. We're going to have some student groups come in and take seats, but I'm going to go ahead and get started, just with a mini-introduction, in case you haven't been here during Focus on Staff and Students. Two board retreats ago, I was involved in a conversation where our board wanted to talk about what makes ASD great, and the things that we kept coming back to were really the people in ASD, whether they were students, staff, community members, parents, or employees of any type doing any job. It's the work we do every day that makes us great. So with that being said, each board meeting in ASD has a Focus on Staff and Students, whereby we celebrate the people who make ASD great. So to begin this evening's Focus on Staff and Students, would Adam Johnson please come forward? Let's give him a hand. And is Carrie, are you his principal? Please come forward as well, from Roaming Middle School. Congratulations. And I'm going to talk a little bit about you, if that's all right. So to my left, your right is Adam Johnson, and he has been named a 2017 State History Teacher of the Year. All right. This award is presented annually by the Gilder-Lehman Institute of American History, the nation's leading organization dedicated to K-12 American history education. He has instructed and participated in the National Geography B Project Citizen Program, We the People, the Citizen and the Constitution Program, Model United Nations, and has mentored students in the research and project building for the National History Day Program. Adam teaches debate, coaches multiple sports such as cross-country running, wrestling, and trap. He has recently become a father and loves spending time with his little guy. Adam has an incredible depth of knowledge of his subject and has been the department chair at Roaming for Social Studies for many years. Please join the school board and administration and his principal in congratulating Adam as the 2017 State History Teacher of the Year. All right. So Adam, we're going to take a picture, but we also want to, first of all, I want to find out about your little guy, his name and everything, and then if you'd like to say a few words to the audience, and you have to hold this kind of clip.
Sure. My little guy, is this working? Okay. He is ten months old. He just started kind of walking a little bit now, so he's at the point right now where you kind of have to watch him all the time, because he's kind of pulling everything down, so it's a lot of work, but it's also a lot of fun, and it's kind of what I enjoy doing now as a father. So I've been teaching for fourteen years, my tenth year at Roaming, and, yeah, I think it's a great school. I've always, always, you know, enjoyed working there and love the staff, and there's no better place I'd rather be. I wouldn't see six years in the Anchorage School District, so, you know, it's a great school district, and thank you very much.
And our next award is for Jasmine Kobayachi and Coach Snead. Is Coach here? Please come forward. Jasmine, did I get that right? All right. And there may be other riflery team members here in attendance, are there other riflery members? Would you like to come up with your teammate here? Please come forward. And Jasmine attends Diamond, and she broke the longstanding Cook-Inlet Conference riflery record by scoring two ninety-seven out of a possible three hundred at the Chugiak High Range. Excellent. Ladies and gentlemen, that is Olympic caliber right here, Olympic caliber right here. Jasmine was perfect in the first two stages, firing a hundred in the prone position and a hundred in the standing position, and she followed that with the ninety-seven in the kneeling. The performance took down the region record of two ninety-six set in two thousand and three by services Jessalyn Schultz and equaled by several shooters in subsequent years. Coach John Snead said, "Tension built as the realization that the new region record was within reach," after Jasmine's perfect score in the standing stage. He added, "It's very rare for a high school student to shoot one hundred in standing." Kobayashi's efforts, sorry, I didn't get your name right, led Diamond to a seven-zero victory over Chugiak, and I know the Chugiak High principal's here, but Diamond gotcha. And please join the Anchorage School Board and Administration in congratulating Jasmine for breaking the longstanding Cook-Inlet Conference riflery record. Congratulations. And Jasmine, your teammates are here that supported you, and would you like to say a few words as well as Coach Snead, please?
It was definitely unexpected. I don't know. And I, okay. Am I too quiet? Okay. But, yeah, it was definitely incredible. I definitely wasn't expecting it, and I...
So in the Olympics, since I mentioned that, they go to Disneyland. Where did, what did you do after you won? What was your celebration?
Frozen yogurt.
So frozen yogurt it is. Well, thank you. Would you like to say something, Coach?
Yeah, no sugar or caffeine for the shooters. It's been a pleasure to coach Jasmine for the past four years. She's an incredible student athlete, also an academic athlete as well, and she works really hard. She'll be at Regions next Saturday, and after the Thanksgiving break, of course, and then she's heading to the University of Fairbanks to shoot in the Junior Olympics.
Excellent. Come on, celebrate with us. Let's get a picture, team. All right, congratulations, Jasmine. And at this time, we're turning the tides a little bit on our media friends, and would James Gaddis and Megan Missurick please come forward if you're in the crowd? There they are. So these two folks wake us up on Channel Eleven in the mornings, and we wanted to celebrate them, because they are Anchorage's anchors for KTVA morning show called Daybreak. Since October of two thousand and fourteen, KTVA's Teacher of the Week highlights educators who have made a difference in the lives of students and their community. Each week, exceptional teachers are recognized and highlighted for their work and innovation in the classroom. Families, students, colleagues, and community members submit nominations through an online application on the website, and viewers can tune in every Monday to learn about the great things going on in ASD classrooms. The school board and administration would like to thank James and Megan and KTVA for supporting educators in ASD and throughout Alaska. We appreciate the community partnership, and we wanted to celebrate you today, instead of you always celebrating us. So of course, they're in the media, so I can hand over the mic and have them share whatever they like with you guys.
Well, hello, everyone, and it's been awesome getting to do this Teacher of the Week and getting to know all of our teachers and students. It's crazy how many schools we have in the Anchorage School District, and we head out to the Valley sometimes, too, but we have an amazing group of teachers here in the city, and, I mean, if I had a student in ASD, I would be proud to have them here, because they get a great education, and it's so great to meet all the diversity and all the different types of schools that we have. of schools that we have.
I don't like to talk a lot, so, no, but I echo what Megan said, and it's been great to get into these classrooms and just to see firsthand just how valuable the teachers and the staff are, and I think one of the biggest takes is, I mean, you all know how great your teachers are, and, but it's amazing how many times they praise the school district and their fellow staff members and other teachers, and just, you know, a lot of times we always ask, "What's the secret to your success?" And many times, you know, we're asking personally, and they'll say, "Oh, it's my support staff. It's all the people in this school," and everyone we talk to seems, they just love the school district, they love their school, they love coming to work every day, and that certainly has a lot to do with, you know, what the district is up to, and it's just a good place to be. Lots of smiling faces when we step into those schools, so we're glad we can make them a little bit brighter and showcase all that you do, so thank you.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Thanks. And in addition to TV, we have supporters for radio. Would April Powers and Mark Murphy please come forward? So, Mark and April are morning on-air personalities for Magic 98.9. For over 10 years, Magic 98.9 Radio has been highlighting educators monthly for their excellence in the classroom. Teachers are nominated through an online form. Families, students, colleagues, and community members can log in either through Facebook or a Google account, providing an email address. Anchorage School District K-8 teachers who go above and beyond are selected. Magic 98.9 personalities visit the award-winning teacher and his or her classroom as a secret with gifts including beautiful flowers from Burgoyes Flores, a gift certificate to 49 State Brewery, where we don't drink alcohol, and, and an Allure Day, yeah, an Allure Days Spa gift certificate. These surprise visits and gifts make it a magic month for our favorite teacher, and the school board administration would like to thank Magic 98.9 for supporting educators in ASD, and it is okay for adults to have a little glass of wine or something in celebration. So, let me just have a bunch of students back there, just let them know. So, we want to thank you and for your support of teachers, and hopefully you can say a few words as well.
Alright, well, we'll keep it short. We both talk for a living, and hopefully you hear us in the morning, and that should suffice, but we love nominating or reading the nominations for our teachers. The students do this with their parents, and some of the things that we get are, as you can imagine, priceless. A lot of times, parents will also reach out because the teacher has gone above and beyond and done something exceptional for their child, and they want that recognition. We love surprising the teachers, as you mentioned, we kind of pop in with the principal, and usually when the principal of a school shows up in your classroom, it's not good, but it is when we get to come in afterwards. And we do have some really great partners. I'll let Mark tell you about the partners, as you mentioned, too, and what they do with us.
Yeah, we've been doing this for over 10 years, and Burgoyes has been with us for such a long time, and without them, we just couldn't do something like this, so it really is nice to be able to bring in to the community and to the schools some nice awards for the teachers. I personally have a 15-year-old and a 12-year-old that have just had an amazing experience at school, so we can't say thank you enough to the teachers and, of course, the parents for nominating those teachers along with their students, so thank you so much.
And it's amazing, I'm a Magic listener, and I could just close my eyes like I'm driving and hear your voices. That's great. So, thank you so much for your support, and we'll take another picture as well. Alright. Will the Bartlett High School football team and coaching staff please come forward? Ladies, too, cheer team as well. Come on forward. Come on and gather up here. I'll get, yes, yes, we'll shake all your hands. Nice job. Hi, great. Come on up and we're going to share the love here with you guys. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the Bartlett Golden Bears are the 2017 Division I High School State Football Champions. It was a victory in a hard, a hard-fought game. The West Anchorage Eagles and Bartlett Golden Bears vying for the Division I Alaska State Football Championship. In the end, Bartlett won the title in a 40-33 victory. You would never think it was that close because, or that, you know, you would have thought it was closer. I was there every minute, it was so exciting. A back-and-forth second half would ultimately come down to Bartlett's final series, down 33-32 with just over two minutes to play. Bartlett's All-State Lineman of the Year, Thomas Seo? 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 Where's Seo? Thomas, right here! This man, Thomas Seo, recovered a fumble which, who knows how it was even fumbled, it was just this amazing thing that led to Hunter Cargill's score. Where's Hunter?
Hunter.
Hunter, there you go, the score. So, with 1 minute and 50 seconds remaining, Bartlett had to go 56 yards to pay dirt. Senior running back, Jontay Edwards, where's Jontay? Jontay converted a key fourth and foreplay at midfield that kept the Golden Bears alive. Now with 28 seconds left, Bartlett quarterback, help me out, Zai Malia Hughes. Zai Malia Hughes, where's Zai? Zai, quarterback right over there, threw a 22-yard pass to junior Stanley Iacopo to set up Cargill's go-ahead score. The state title brings the season full circle for the Golden Bears, who started as the top-ranked Division I team. The Bartlett High School football program also boosts a strong academic record with members of the team participating in mandatory peer-based study halls until their GPA reaches 3.0. The football program at Bartlett also encourages students to be leaders in their program, in their school, and in their community by demonstrating teamwork, good listening, strong work ethic, problem-solving, and follow-through. Please join the Anchorage School Board and Administration in congratulating Bartlett Golden Bears. And I got in trouble by the radio host because I was down on the field and then he, and I was cheering, and he said, "I don't, I don't think the ASD superintendent should be cheering just for one team," but I was because it was awesome, so congratulations, Bartlett Bears, Golden Bears. And we would like, who's, I think, Iacopa, did I get that right? Iacopa, would you like to say a few words?
I'd like to thank everybody that helped us with this season. We had, we had a lot to overcome. It was a bumpy road in the beginning, but we worked as a team and we finished strong in the end, and nobody gave up, not even to me or anybody in this team, and we all believe in each other. And I'd like to thank all the coaches and everybody in this community, and ASD board and everybody. We're the guys.
Would you like to talk, Coach?
I wanted to present our superintendent with a jersey from our season, and, you know, she can just wear one out of every eight days or something like that. And it's a Danish custom, I'm part Danish, if you ever offer a jersey, the recipient has to put it on right now, so, yep. Our guys finished with a team GPA of over 3.10. A couple, a couple years ago, we put in a study hall because our team GPA was like 2.33, and these guys dedicated themselves all the way since January and went to study hall diligently, sometimes a little bit by force, but mostly on their own. And they also, in addition, which people don't know, is they overcame a lot of tragedy. We had a teacher in our building pass, we had a teammate pass, and that was really tough, and they also, in addition to that, we went on, we went to the Lower 48 to California for a game, and they each raised 1,500. Many of them worked in the community on jobs and made some great connections with our community, so the year for us has just been a win-win-win, so we really appreciate everybody's support. Thank you.
Okay, and would the Cheers Club like to come up and lead us in a cheer? Everybody in this audience is going to do a cheer for Bartlett. Come on up. Who are you guys? Who's your cheer captain? Alright, you're going to lead us in something or other. We'll do what you say.
Come on, girl.
Let's go, let's go.
Y-E-L-L, everybody yell, Go Bears!
Go Bears!
Go Bears!
Go Bears!
Y-E-L-L, Y-E-L-L, everybody yell, Go Bears!
Go Bears!
Go Bears!
Go Bears!
Y-E-L-L, Y-E-L-L, everybody yell, Go Bears!
Go Bears!
Go Bears!
Go Bears!
Woo!
Do something for us in a minute, but we have Senator Wilikowski here for a special celebration. Senator, please come forward.
Oh, we have one more presentation, one more short presentation. Thank you to the school board, by the way, for giving us this opportunity. This is from the state of Alaska, and this is for Coach Jessen, and this is not just for this year, but we did this legislative citation actually back in April. This is for a lifetime of community service. This is for someone who has dedicated his life to improving and doing just a phenomenal job for these kids, really turning these young men into just amazing young men.
Young people.
Young people, okay. Thanks for the question. And a very strong, opinionated daughter as well, who was helpful in putting this together. Just a couple things about John Jessen. He joined the United States Air Force, moved to Alaska in 1985, and he has won more games, more football games, 100 football games actually last year. More football games as a coach at a single school in the history of Cook Inlet Conference. So, for that, for your lifetime of achievement, the Alaska Legislature.
I want to make sure our co-coach, Dana Sparza, is not here tonight, and he would love this, and he's down having Thanksgiving with his in-laws, stay alive and stuff, so, but he has done a great job in our community, and it's neat that we were co-head coaches together, and he was a player that played for me, and it was an honor to be side-by-side with him, so I just want to mention.
And we'll take a quick picture. And I'm going to turn it over to you, team. Who do I give this mic to?
Oh, yeah. Let's go, let's go, let's go. Oh, yeah. Escalade! Escalade! Batya, batya, rumah, 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 rumah. Excellent, excellent season and excellent final game.
And with that, we conclude our Focus on Students, Staff, and Community, and I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session.
I move that we move into executive session?
For the purposes of litigation. And I'm looking for a second?
Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, and we are out of work session into executive session.
We should get our own administrative team.
I think Kathy's going to learn that for us and still leave it.